I got today.
Good to go. All right.
You have a chair, it's up to you.
Well, I'm just wondering if we are.
I think all of the videos.
Here we go. I'll call this town violent hidden select board meeting for May twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty two to order. Roll call Jake Thompson, Lizzie Dyer, myself, Pam Alley. Eric Gasperini is attending virtually. I was a bunker deputy town clerk in our new town manager. Interim, sorry.
Stratton.
Stratton, thank you. Do we have any additions subtracts the agenda?
Oh, Wes. Was Reed wanted to be added as seven D, those were kind of mixed up, A, B, C, D, planning commission.
Is that it? All right. I move we approve the agenda second presented all those in favor.
Yes.
Prove the minutes from the May tenth, twenty twenty two.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Approve and sign treasures warrant number forty six, seven, excuse me. So moved. All those in favor?
Yes.
All right. Five A communications, a violent hidden planning board.
Did you have a chance to read through that letter? It's talking about a proposed amendment to the land use ordinance?
Yes, I did. Did everyone get a chance to read that?
But I think that they. The letter that the planning board sent wasn't it just if it was in. What is it called?
Marine one.
But what is it? What is the?
Residential use. Permit.
Yeah, but it's not every commercial permit. It's only like the certain ones that fall under the home occupation business, right?
Home occupation, that's what.
No, you would have asked us to redo the home occupation. Which we did. Came up with.
So stop that.
Also, that would allow to have like a small impact business in the residential marine one zone. Given certain conditions. Increase the scrutiny of what had to be looked at and.
But part of it was that the planning board had to make a site visit. That's what they're unhappy about.
We haven't heard from. Banner comes to our meetings and it's been very helpful. But I mean, you know, the whole thing came about because of Jake. Stanley's garage going in on Ocean View Road and there wasn't an onsite inspection. And if there had have been one, it might have changed. A lot of things. I think the neighbors might have thought things were done a little better. I just, I. You know, I. I think there are certain things that absolutely should have an onsite inspection. No, I just. I mean, it's a volunteer board. I mean, you guys are a volunteer board. You did ten dollars meeting or something, but you know, it's, you know.
And your point is?
I think to be a, to have a professional planning board, they're gonna have to do some onsite inspection.
Yeah.
You know? I just. I was on the planning board for four years, you know, I've been on the landing commission for thirty five, you know, it's.
Can I ask a question? I, I'm sort of coming in on this late and I understand that, but. So it's my understanding that where we stand is that the planning commission has submitted proposed changes. And this, this letter refers to some of the changes?
Yes.
Okay, so where do we stand with the proposed changes?
We haven't even had a public hearing on them yet.
We, we as the board haven't reviewed them yet.
I brought tonight a summary of what we've done throughout those two and a half years. I've attached to it. The summary, I've tried to refer to the page in the zoning is about a hundred pages long. And we've redlined it. Taken copy and put in in red ink what we'd like to change. We put, you know, black lines through the words and stuff we want to remove. But I'm bringing, giving you each a hundred page document to review seems a little much. I brought. That's getting ahead of.
Yeah.
What you're on.
Yeah, let's.
Let's get this done first.
That was just, I was just referencing the, the letter I thought they were.
So this one specifically, they're asking, they don't want the.
Site visits for all commercial. Permits, is that what you're saying?
As that letter says, the planning board is willing to do site visits.
Sorry, thank you.
But they don't feel they should be required to every time considering. Site visits are somewhat cumbersome to do. As explained in the letter and. Plus. Commercial permits may well be happening somewhere the planning board is very familiar with and we don't really need necessarily to do a site visit.
So my question is on specifically the garage that brought about all this. Why was no site visit done there?
It wasn't deemed necessary.
I live in that neighborhood. I would have deemed it necessary.
I don't live there and I would have deemed it necessary.
My mother lives there. She would have deemed it necessary.
My understanding is nothing has heard since then that would have changed our decision.
My, I guess my point is if it's left up to the planning board to decide when they can or will not go to a site because of their, where was it? Many of us have lived here our whole life, so most of us, most of the time these visits will be unnecessary. So if it's gonna be left up to them to decide when and where they go. It doesn't seem to matter. Who lives in that neighborhood because they won't have a stay in if the planning board goes to visit. It's gonna be left up to them.
What are they going to deem as necessary?
Right, right.
A lack of familiarity with the area would be the reason. We need to see what mitigating factors are appropriate, would be appropriate to. Add to the permit. That might be another reason to have a site visit. So the planning board is not oblivious to the possible need for a site visit. Planning board objects to having to do it every time, whether it's needed or not. But I mean, yeah, there aren't, you know, historically. I mean Jake's permit. I mean, is, was one of a handful that's happened since nineteen ninety three when that language went in.
Right.
I mean, Kevin Moore, his business up there came under that uses similar to a home occupation, you know? It's, I mean, it's light. And like commercial use. But I mean, it isn't like it, there's, I mean, there's gonna, you know, be months go by, maybe even a year when. One of these permits isn't even coming for the planning board. It's not like they're gonna be doing these onsite inspections every month.
It's not every commercial permit. It's only the ones that fall into the nonperformant.
No, it's every, every commercial permit.
Is that what it was?
So anytime anybody wants to start a new commercial enterprise, it would require a site visit.
Eric has his hand raised.
Sorry, go ahead, Eric.
I think it's fair that, you know, maybe a site visit is necessary for a lot of home, what deems as home occupation. I don't think it's necessary for every single commercial application.
I think, I thought that's what we wanted to begin with.
I thought that's what it was, but I must have read it wrong. I thought it was just on the home occupation business.
Right.
Well, that's how the discussion came up, that's.
Right.
Yeah, I didn't know it was on every commercial. Like, I mean, if you're downtown, that's a commercial area. You shouldn't have to go down there for a site visit.
No, and I agree with that. I, I guess that was my confusion because I thought it was specifically for that home occupation use.
That's why I.
I believe it's, it's for the commercial, like commercial use in the residential one zone. We also have a commercial zone downstream and that has already has. The review process in it, which I don't believe requires onsite inspection.
Well, if it's in, if it's in an already zoned commercial. Already in a commercially zoned place, then. Yeah, you probably wouldn't, but, but I think that's exactly what we're talking about is that the home occupation.
Well, if it's the commercial that's outside of the commercial district.
Right.
That the whole thing came.
Right.
The whole thing would.
It's changing the, what it's zoned for, correct?
Well, it's, it's putting a commercial use into a residential zone.
Okay, so that's.
Cautiously.
Right, right.
I mean, we, I mean, we spent quite a bit of time going through this and we were originally gonna try to do it for all three residential zones. But it just. There were too many issues with, you know, going up island and putting commercial use in them. Somewhat secluded area. Most other things, but. But I, I, we spent a lot of time with that proposal. I, the idea that the planning board. Again, I, I, I think there's only been a handful. People that would have asked for this in the last thirty years. If you have to do six onsite inspections in thirty years, you can't handle that. Maybe you should be on a different board. I mean, I'm sorry, but it's like, I just think it's unprofessional not to look into something. That could be very problematic.
So you are in agreement with this. Site visit?
Yeah.
Okay, as it's worded. But the rest, but the.
It's not on the.
But these people here.
The planning board is.
These people here are not in favor.
That's the planning board, he's the planning.
Correct. So these people that signed this are not in favor. Okay. Just to make sure everything's clear.
I think a lot of headache will also be prevented by requiring a butter to be notified. That was also in the proposed changes, correct?
Yes.
You know, I. I don't think we need, like I said before, I don't think every commercial applicant needs.
What if we changed it to? Every, every, like if in a butter request, if they all get noticed or whatever, like, and they request it, would that be? I mean, I.
I think you're right, Jake.
I'd be watering it down some, but I mean.
If an butter requests.
I don't know how to make everyone happy on this one, I guess, but.
You won't.
Well, personally, I, I don't find, I don't, if you're on the, on this committee, I don't know, just. You know, it's not a huge, to me, it's not a huge deal. I'm on a lot of committees and I'm, and I attend. Ninety-nine percent of the things that I've asked to do when I'm on a committee, you wear the hat, you do the job. That's my personal opinion, but I see, I agree with what Jake is saying. If you, if there's, if.
If there's no, no one that.
If the butters are cool with it, then maybe it's okay.
Maybe we could change it. I mean, we'll have a public hearing on it anyway, so everyone will have their say and we could always amend the language then or now.
I mean. Also, I, I understand it is a volunteer committee and we don't want to push people away from it. So if this board is saying that they don't agree with this language, then let's try to find a middle ground. So maybe that is the best way to go.
Yeah.
So.
Again, I really think you need to keep in mind that it isn't gonna happen very often.
Right.
Maybe not even once in a year.
We certainly all agreed that it's important that each a butter is notified of any possible. Occupant, business occupation, whatever that is gonna be.
Set up that anybody within five hundred feet would be notified.
So not just the butters, but okay.
I mean, again, it's just, the more you do up, the more you do upfront, the less problem you have later.
Right.
We're not, I mean, we're, we're not trying to be difficult. We're just trying to make it work. It would be nice if site visits were a little bit simpler to do, but they're not because of legal requirements. In other words, like I said in the letter, a site visit involves the town notifying the public ahead of time. It has to happen at an agreed upon or a pre-announced time. All the planning board has to be there at once with the secretary to keep notes. So it's, it's not just when you get a chance and go check out this property.
Right, it has to be a plan and then.
It's just like a planning board meeting only elsewhere.
Right, okay, that's. Good point. Well.
We still haven't had a public hearing.
Right, we have to have a public hearing on it. Do we present both options at that meeting then and let the public decide? Would that be best? Instead of changing it now?
So.
Two separate word.
For ordinance changes. You have to present at a. Public meeting or there's two, actually two public meetings spaced according to law. And you present what you propose. Certainly, the reason for a public hearing is to get comments and possibly make changes. But then when you make a change.
You have to have another public.
Right, yeah, that's what I'm trying to say.
Yeah.
It's, it's a, it's a process.
Well.
We have to start somewhere, I guess.
Yeah. Well.
We have to start somewhere, I guess.
Yeah.
That summer I gave you the first page and a half. I think that covered pretty much everything that we discussed in my two and a half years and then attached to it, I put the.
Sound of third page is where, where he has third page number seven is where it says a form of the planning board numbers will make a site visit to the property.
That's for commercial activity in residential.
Right, this is all under that thing. So if we're gonna make a change, we have to make it to that.
Seven. It's a quorum, I mean, which.
Right, it's three.
Three out of five people. I, I, yeah, I don't, we're not talking about it happening very often. And I, I think it's really important that people, I mean, things, you know, somebody's, oh, I was there last year. Well. Cut all the trees down since you were there last year. You know, I mean, things change. It's going and just looking at it fresh is. It's really helpful. And it, it doesn't have to last very long. I mean, you're talking, I can't imagine taking fifteen, twenty minutes.
Just the butter.
Probably notice about it right here.
Okay. Okay, yes, thank you.
I mean, I, I think it's appropriate that this go to a public hearing and have the public respond to it. I mean, having, I mean, I was. A little surprised to come in and find before I presented it to you that the planning board is already objected to it. I mean, we knew the planning board isn't crazy about doing onsite inspections, but didn't expect them to be coming here and trying to get. Lobby you guys to change what we're trying to present to the general public.
Well, what does the board think? I mean. Do we present it as, has been amended now and then? We're gonna get public input?
Yeah, instead of having to have two or three, yes.
I mean, I think.
I mean, it's hard to, I mean, to decide when it's appropriate for onsite inspection and when it's not. It's. I mean, the planning board. Determined that they didn't need to go and look at Jake's profit. Not that the current language requires that, but. I mean, they can go look at anything if they have questions. You know, Jake's a friend of mine. I think he's gonna do a good job, but.
Right, and I, I'm not opposed to having a business there, but I, I wasn't aware of it.
You know, it didn't appear that it got terribly well scrutinized. And I, I think it would have been a lot better situation if there had have been an onsite inspection.
Well, I think at this point, we should present it as is, and then I think we should bring it up though, in that public hearing that we have received. Notice from the planning board that they disagree with it being mandatory and see what.
I hope they're at the public meeting. I mean, you know, that's.
I think we should just go with this for now and then.
We're gonna have to have a public meeting on it anyway, so.
Yes.
I'll pass it on.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate you guys sending this forward. I know this isn't, as Jake said, we're not gonna be able to please everyone, so.
I don't know how.
But it does have to go before the public. They would be all.
So that's the only thing I can think of to change it is if someone actually disagreed, if there's a complaint or something after the third, before thirty.
Well, there is note, there's supposed to be notification for all butters thirty days, so they, that should be.
Does the code enforcement officer have to go do site visits on all these? Does anyone know?
We count on the CEO. A lot, the planning board to tell us what's there. And if we feel like we don't, we need to know something, it's routine for us to tell the code enforcement officer. Go check this, report back to us at our next meeting, what's, what you saw, so that we can make a decision. So we use pay as our eyes on the ground. Quite regularly.
Okay.
Is there any action item for me on that or?
We'll just have to schedule a public hearing at some point for this.
Yeah, well, I think we're gonna have to go over this ourselves first, right, before we then.
All right, so do you all want red line copies?
Yeah, we have track changes, copies of the document. We don't have everything printed out. At least I don't.
Oh, we sent it to you via email.
Right, so we have that, right, that, that should be enough, like.
Yeah, no, that's funny. We don't need all that paper.
That's fine legally, we have it.
In a track changes document, right?
Yeah, we don't need to have an actual printed copy in front of us.
It's ninety-nine pages.
I know, I saw it on there. I started scrolling through it when I was on my way in, but I didn't have a chance to look at it all, so.
That's why I made the summary.
I know, I like that. That's very handy, yes.
Summary is very handy.
And I tried to find each page with a reference.
So I'm sure it was a lot of work.
For me, to make it make sense.
So we'll, we'll go through the summary and we can review the full document if needed. Bring it up their next meeting and then try to have a public hearing on it.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Is that something I can plant? All right, I think so. Okay. All right. Be five B nominations to MMA Legislative Policy Committee, two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-four. Do we have anyone that actually wants to be nominated?
Not that I know of. I mean, the Maine Municipal Association sends this every year. I mean, I've been on the Legislative Policy Committee before, but I have no interest in doing it.
Nominate them.
Oh, good idea.
Yeah, maybe Eric.
Eric, you wanna do it?
Yes, it's easy, it's fun, so you can have all kinds of free time.
No, thank you.
All right, if no one's asked to actually be on there, I don't think we should just.
I'm not just gonna nominate someone unless they've asked me on it, so me either. All right, let's move on then. Six speakers from the floor. All right. One, seven, committee and department reports appointments, seven A Director of Public Works report. Really? No, that's okay.
No, I don't.
All right. Seven B engineer report.
That was the one that I just gave you. This came in like half an hour ago.
Which I was hoping they would have the transfer station improvement plans. He said they would, but they didn't. I guess we did not get those, correct? Well, we already passed the time where it was gonna be done before.
There's one level for that. Continue advancing development of design plans for the transportation improvements. Provide update design plans to the town during May twenty-sixth site visit.
Which is Thursday.
So now we're gonna get to Thursday. Okay. What's the site visit on Thursday?
The piece that I'm wondering about on this project is the, the gap in the funding, the two hundred and seventy-two thousand. And it was going to be filled with a ship grant. I was hoping to get an update from the engineers because he was supposed to follow up. Brent was supposed to follow up. On the status of the ship grant application. Apparently their DOT needs to come out and do a site visit, but that hasn't happened yet.
Okay.
And if, if we don't get that money, we can't move forward with the project, because we.
Yeah.
It's contingent upon, getting the EDA funding is contingent upon these matching funds.
I agree, it's the, the N D R C grant, so the EDA grant is.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, the N D R C grant is, is requiring the two hundred and seventy-two thousand, two hundred and forty dollars.
Thank you.
Remaining. We, we got, we, we are hoping that we're getting the two hundred and fifty thousand through the ship grant, which would leave the twenty-two thousand, two hundred and forty remaining that we would still need to come up with either from. General fund or.
Yeah.
Um, well, there, there might be some other grants that, you know, we can access, but the idea is like, wait for ship, which because that's just taking so much longer than we expected. We're gonna be like into the fall before we can sign off on the N D R C grant and get a notice to proceed, which is gonna put like our work with the water district behind. It's gonna put the, you know, procurement and paying what are going to turn behind. So the thought was if we can, if we can put that forward for. You know, accessing that funding from the general fund and then replenish when we get the ship grant and if I can secure more funding to cover that two thousand. But to move forward sooner, we would need to get approval to be able to use that funding.
Do we, we have enough in the general fund for that, don't we?
Oh.
My reserve.
There's.
I guess.
I'm, there's a couple of different questions here. So do you mean, is there money in the fund balance? Is there cash? There's cash, but.
Do we have enough to cover that until we find out about the ship grant? So we don't have to delay the program.
So the proposal is to, do we put it on a annual or special town meeting to raise another? Two hundred and seventy-two? I mean, are, do you want to put it on the annual town meeting warrant and take it to the people to vote to appropriate out of fund balance?
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna have to raise it. So is that your suggestion or that's a large sum, so?
Um, I'm a bit nervous about it. I mean, you're already using five hundred thousand out of your fund balance for the budget and I haven't really had a chance to. Analyze financial statements or anything like that.
Well, those are all reserve funds, right? Those first five hundred thousand, is that correct?
Uh, that you're using for your, the existing budget, I don't.
No, your budget.
Oh, this is, okay, all right, not this project. This budget dog.
I'm sorry, your operating budget is already taking five, about five hundred thousand out of your fund balance. I, it's, I'm only a little nervous because I have not have, had enough, you know, a good opportunity to review your financial statements and say, oh, yeah, you got enough money. But I guess the point is, it's going to be. Replenished or? replenished or?
With approval of the ship grant.
It says, says the DOT is coming on the twenty-sixth, right? Is that for the ship grant visit? That's for a different thing?
I mean, and the challenge is like, the the ship, ship personnel, like, had to transition, so, I mean, but Marjorie, you said your your, of Shabique project went through quickly.
Oh, you know, I think she used the wrong acronym when she said, I think she got a coastal planning grant. My colleague down in Shabique said that she'd got a ship grant, and I thought, wow, that was fast. But I think, I think it was a coastal planning grant that she got, so I, I don't, yeah, sorry.
So we need, we need this money before we can sign a grant for how much money?
Uh, the grant is for a million dollars.
So if we don't come up with the money, then we lose the million?
No, we don't lose. We, I think we have a little call to secure the funding. It just postpones us being able to move forward over the summer with like relocation for the water district and other things like paying what it current, but, I mean, if, you know, it wasn't the original plan to do this, right? We we were gonna fund the whole thing through through grants, so. I mean, that's, this is just where we're at, so. I can also get an update, too, by just getting the latest from ship, like, when are we having our site visit? Like, because we haven't even heard yet when.
Yeah, Brent said that he was gonna do that, and we haven't heard back from him.
Because we're, we're like a month out now from the annual town meeting, a little over a month. So if we're gonna add something to the warrant, we need to do it now.
Yeah.
Can we, did, did we sign it last time?
I've got the final one tonight, hopefully.
So if we didn't add it there, then we'd have to do a special town meeting to have that approved.
If we add it and then we find out something in the meantime, can we not, can we just say we don't need to have?
Well, then we could just have them vote against it.
Yeah, it was just, yeah.
Yeah, if we already secured this funding, you can vote it down.
I guess.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's no problem.
I can put, I thought, when I last spoke to Andy, I know we haven't had our latest financials completely audited, but it sounded like we were gonna have a very significant fund balance.
I did get a draft.
So I feel like we have the funds available.
But we don't actually have to take them from fund balance. We could take and ask for the appropriations, too, if we really want to.
That's true.
Really want to.
But that, then, that would change, I mean, it wouldn't change the percentage increase by that much. Well, it actually would, kind of, wouldn't it?
Well, if we could do half and half, half out of fund balance and half out of appropriate.
Yeah.
And then it would just go up.
But then how, if we do get the grants, then how do you?
It's, I mean, it's gonna be reimbursed, so.
Hopefully.
We hope.
I I think I have a really strong chance it's gonna be.
Well, then maybe we should just take it out of fund.
I think that would be better.
Fund balance, and I mean, if something comes up and we get, we can always go back and have a special town meeting to ask, like we did with the police budget a couple of years ago.
Right.
Now, that's not what I really wanna do, but.
No, but it's what we need to do.
Well, this is a draft audit, so he's saying that the fund balance is three million, five twenty-one, three oh two.
So it'll be three million after we take out five hundred roughly?
Yeah.
So we just, like, two point seven roughly?
Yeah, which should be enough to carry us for a half a year almost, right?
Mm-hmm.
I would think we should be safe.
I, I mean, if we're not, we're gonna be in big trouble.
All right, I mean, if we lose a million, if we, I mean, I think, I don't think we should stall the.
No, I think we should move forward, right?
Probably have to do it, so I guess we'll add it to the, to the warrant, asking the town to approve us to take that money out of the fund balance to, to flow us until we get the ship grant.
Yeah.
Or hopefully it's, we should know more by, in a month, right?
Yeah.
We should have a lot more.
There's some other additional funding, um, water infrastructure funding, so I'll look into that, too, because there might be other options and not just having to rely on ship, so.
The more grants we get, the better, so.
The longer we don't have to keep matching them.
Right.
That's the other thing, so like.
Right, do you have, I know you provide this. Of the total projects, how much have we had, as the town actually had to put forth? I feel like we've had a lot, and it's been covered through grants. It's like, I I'd like to, I can remember it, and then I can have that in my back pocket when people ask me.
Match, one million, four hundred and forty-four?
Yeah, yeah.
One point four million we've had to provide, and a lot of that's been in our reserves that we've been building up.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's not like we're asking for a big increase in taxes.
How mu, um, how, so how much is taken from, will be paid for by taxation? Nothing, correct? We'll try, it's all gonna be?
Yeah, it's a seven point six million dollar project this town would have considered it so far, one point, like, you know, not quite one point five, one point four four.
Right.
So twenty percent, that's just like when you're making a down payment on your house.
Right.
And you wanna ask for the two hundred and seventy-two, two forty?
Is that the right number? Yeah, I guess. We don't really want to. We kind of feel we have to.
Yeah, we've come too far to not.
No, let's not delay.
Yeah. And everything is so, takes so long.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't wanna slow anything down. I mean, if you guys are trying to order plate, that could.
Well, that, I don't think this ship grant will affect materials for the water, but it it will affect other aspects of the project. Like you say, the, um, yes, no, that's fine. No, you're fine.
Go ahead.
So to see if the town will appropriate two hundred and seventy-two thousand, two hundred and forty from fund balance from, for matching funds toward.
Northern Borders Regional Commission.
The, what is it? What is the?
Northern Border Regional Commission, N D R C.
Regional. Commission.
Yeah.
Grant. So for matching funds toward the northern border, we, regional commission grant totaling the grant is a million? Does that sound like a good warrant article? Is that explained?
I don't think so. I mean, someone's always gonna ask what, what, what is for, what's to say for the downtown project.
And then we can also mention that we expect the grant funding to cover that, reimburse that.
For the downtown project?
Yeah, maybe add that at the end.
Yep. I would think that would be. And then that should, I hope that does it for the warrants.
Could you put that in the form of a motion?
I make a motion that we had a, what is it, warrant item number? Do we have to have a number board or just a warrant?
Warrant article.
Warrant article.
That reads
to see if the town will appropriate two hundred and seventy-two thousand, two hundred and forty dollars from fund balance for matching funds towards the northern borders regional commission grant totaling one million for the downtown project.
I second that motion. All those in favor? Eric raised his hand and said, I, you didn't hear, but I saw him raising it.
Yes, I said yes.
All right.
I wish I would say.
We do too, Eric, we do too.
COVID is nothing to be scared of, people.
Yeah, that's why you're home.
All right, I think that's enough on the engineer board, correct? Exercise tech collector appointment.
I didn't know what you said.
She's the DMV agent.
Oh, okay.
Is that what you said?
Bureau of Motor Vehicles. Somebody in the office has to be the agent to vote Bureau of Motor Vehicles. And Darlene has been acting as that person for quite a while, but when we did all these appointments.
So we need to appoint her.
Last time, and it was, yeah, whether it was, should be you or should be, yeah.
Maybe you should be down.
We didn't do it last time, because we weren't sure if it would be Darlene or Marjorie.
So we need to appoint Darlene. All right, I move, we appoint Darlene, the exercise tech collector. Is that correct?
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
There you go.
Congratulations.
Good job, Darlene.
Congratulations.
Did you want to be that person?
Too late now.
Too late.
Too late now. All right, seven D, uh, planning commission.
Did we cover everything before, or?
I think you might have.
Okay, just go through this and we'll revisit it at the next meeting after we've got a chance.
I can send you that, I mean, I do have it on my.
Well, I think Marjorie sent us the red line old copy, right?
Yeah, I don't think I had the summary.
Yeah, well, we have this to go by, so now we know what to look for when we're scrolling through pages.
Right, we have this. And then we have one, what we have in our email. And it's already in my Adobe.
Yeah, I I opened it and I was like, I haven't got time.
I haven't even looked at it.
I opened it and I got, and it's like, there was the table of contents, I was like, no.
I know, I know, I started to read it when I just flopped it in there, so.
All right, eight, old business cemetery mowing RFP, possible action item.
Oh, boy.
Wow, all right. So this is from, I got the Virgil Cray Jr. Six-month bid, twenty thousand, twelve-month bid, forty thousand. Confused by the state.
Yeah.
What's it for?
The date is seven fifteen, two thousand and two.
I don't understand. It's not July.
Does he think that's when it's supposed to start? Or is that a five?
Yeah, I mean, you can pass it around. Yeah, and that's.
He might have forgotten to put the.
I don't know, maybe he was just looking at, I don't know why he did that, but, yeah.
I assume the bid's good. It just came in, didn't it?
This one, Jensen Brown. Twelve-month bid, forty-three thousand, submitted on May nineteenth. So we have.
Two thousand dollar difference.
Jensen is online, if you have any questions for him.
Oh, yep.
There is forty thousand in the budget.
I can't remember where it was, the number was. Please let me know, it's forty in the budget.
Well, what it has here is, you know, two figures there for the mowing contract.
Has one of them in the cemetery on, one of them.
Oh, interesting. No, I I only checked.
Yes, so this is, I think part of it's in the cemetery. And then the rest is the stone restoration cleaning and then.
That's the cemetery.
Oh, these, these two are for the cemetery. This is strictly for the.
It's a good point. I didn't check. I just checked the, yeah.
The cemetery is part of it and the town is part of it, because some of it's a van stand and the sewer places, so it's not all just in one place, I don't think. Is it? Am I right on that or not?
No, I think you are. I think it's in two places.
I think it's in two places, but I could be wrong on that.
Oh, here it is, cemetery, parks, and sewer?
Yeah.
Oh, eighty-six percent cemetery, eleven percent parks, three percent sewer. Oh, because this, around the pump station.
Well, since we only have forty in the budget, let's see, we have, we have to go with this.
In one department, right? That's just in the cemetery.
Oh.
Yeah, so.
Can we ask Jensen, does he have all his own equipment? I mean, that's part of it, right?
Yeah, and insurance.
Well, parks.
That's part of the.
Right.
That's part of the.
Parks peaceful.
Advertising, right?
The mow, the parks comes out of the parks.
Crash and budget, looks like Debbie's broke it down there.
If he's on here, we might as well ask him. I mean, he's all, he's got all the stuff that we asked for, right? I assume.
He must have reviewed the contract.
Jensen, do you have all your own equipment and insurance?
So, um, I don't have my equipment and insurance right now, but I have a quote sitting in my email, and I know what equipment I need. I've, like, I just don't see, on my end, there's no reason for me to buy that ahead of time unless I get the bid, so I've been holding off until, excuse me, until I knew whether I'd have it, but I'm, I have until the end of the Ju, the end of July to get it, as I understand, and.
You know, it'd be, the contract would start July first, so you'd have to, the end of June to get it.
I'm, I, yeah, my, I misspoke, yeah, end of June, start of July.
That's okay. No, I I understand. I wouldn't expect you to.
But yeah, like, I I I know what I'd need to get, and I'm ready to go on that. Um, I've been working with David, and he said I could even use some of his equipment in the short term, just like during the transition, so. Like, I'm, I'm good to go on that.
So you're, you're already familiar with all the properties and everywhere to go and all that?
Yeah, and if I, like, even if I can't find one, I I'm, I'm sure David would be willing to show me.
Okay.
I, yeah, I'm, I'm, I know where all the cemeteries are, for sure.
Yeah, no, yeah.
And just all the rest, it's a matter of driving around and finding them. I, that won't be a problem at all.
And certainly people will tell you if you miss one.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'll be happy to get one if I do, though, just a heads up and I'll head over when I can. Um, I'm gonna mute again, just let me know if there are any other questions.
So anyone have, I I would make a motion that we hire Jensen, since he's already familiar with the properties. I mean, three thousand dollars is a lot, I mean, especially if he's done it with David and knows
He has.
the layout. I mean, I think it might be less headache for.
You think we'd have?
He knows what to, what we expect to be done, I guess. That's kind of what I'm saying.
Right, no, I see what you're saying.
That's just my motion.
No, I'd.
Our second, our second Jake's motion.
All right, any other discussion?
Could you, um?
Make a better motion?
I just, I wrote it out for you.
Oh, yes, sorry.
And could you just add, could you add to the end of that contingent upon insurance?
Okay. I move to accept the bid from Jensen Brunz, right?
That's correct.
And the amount of forty-three thousand.
Correct.
The town of Honning, main mowing, trimming, lawn care, maintenance for town cemeteries and other town properties for the period, July first, twenty twenty-two to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, contingent on him acquiring the proper insurance.
Thank you.
I'll second that motion. All those in favor?
Yes.
Great.
Thanks, Jensen.
Thank you, Jensen.
Congratulations, Jensen.
Thank you. Very happy to hear about this.
All right. Yes, we. Getting down to the wire. Okay, A B, boundary line confirmation agreement.
So I did get a draft article from the attorney also this afternoon. So on May, I'm, again, I'm just kind of reviewing and touching up with this. On April twenty-sixth, said the board agreed to draft a warrant for a special town meeting. There was, it didn't seem like there was a motion or anything. Uh, and then I've had a a lot of conversations with Andy about it, and so I wasn't really sure if I was supposed to move forward, putting this on the town meeting warrant. So I wanted to come back and circle back around to you guys and see, um, is this something that you're ready to put on a town meeting warrant and have the people vote? You know, where it's a transfer, where any kind of transfer of property or, or confirming property lines has to go to the town meeting for the people to vote on it.
Yeah, I don't think we.
I thought we had agreed.
Yeah, I thought we had.
Do we have to have it at the June meeting at the school, or are we having a different special town meeting?
That's entirely up. That's entirely up to you.
What, should it take too long? Should we just tack it on to that one, I mean?
Just, it would, it would be helpful if it happened before then. When is the meeting?
That's not till the twenty eighth, so. We should be able to have it.
Regular meeting.
Which would be what the.
When's, our, our next meeting?
Be like eight, the seventh or eighth, is that right?
It is. The seventh.
Seventh, June. We could have it at five o'clock before, because, yeah, and then have.
You guys, you guys want to meet on a set? Never mind, the fourteenth is election day. I'm sorry.
It'll be June seventh.
What did you want to do?
We'll just have a special town meeting just on that.
Just before our next regular schedule meeting, so which is on June seventh.
You approve the warrant first. You have to sign that in a public meeting and then I have to have it at least seven days prior to post it.
So we have to sign it now?
And we don't have it, you know, typed up.
All right, so.
We'd have to have it for this meeting for the seventh.
You'd have it this week.
You have to, you have to approve it and sign it at a meeting.
So the, it's like the attorney didn't draft the warrant.
Yeah, I have the warrant article. I just have the wording. I'm, I'm a little. Where are we? What did you, what, what action do you want us to take?
We wanted, we want to sign that and then have a public meeting so that it can be voted on, right?
But you don't want to have it at the annual town meeting.
No, we'd like to have it before that.
Yeah.
Just so we don't have.
Into a, a special town meeting warrant? Yeah.
We are meeting again this Thursday, aren't we? Would that be better?
Have it ready for Thursday.
Yes.
We have to meet with.
What's Thursday?
We're meeting with.
Oh, with Don Garrish.
So we could, we can meet.
Get it prepared.
That first.
Have it ready for Thursday.
Yeah.
Is that time enough?
That gives you enough time, right?
We already have it.
It'd be more than seven days from the next.
Does that include weekends or just business?
It has to be seven days prior.
Doesn't matter if it's a weekend. Okay, yep.
We can still vote on it on June seventh.
Yeah, we signed it on Thursday, then we can have it at the regular town meeting and, yeah, yeah.
Just give it to you tomorrow?
Okay.
That seems like there is probably doing.
That way then, doesn't have to wait for another month. Yeah.
Yeah, get it done.
Well, I mean, as soon as we could do it, if we hit it right now, and we posted tomorrow, so we may meet till next Wednesday on it. So this is right in that timeframe anyway, so, all right. Uh, H C Waste Management Request for Price Increase. So it's the same.
Well, I talked to him.
Okay.
And he just went round and around and around about how all the expenses are going up. And I said, well, could you meet us halfway at one and a half instead of the three? Because we've got another increase coming in January. And he just kept saying, well, yeah, I've had dozens of these conversations and, you know, our prices are, you know, I'm doing contracts in the eighties now and, you know, he just, you know.
Didn't really answer.
He didn't really say. He just kept saying, you know, talking about the three percent. And this is as of July first. I guess the, the other thing that kind of worried me is I, I started looking at the budget, so. So currently, right now, our per ton tipping fee is sixty-six thirty-three per ton. And it'll go to sixty-eight thirty-two per ton. And then the, um, the per hall price would go from eight forty-four twenty-two to eight sixty-nine sixty-one. And in, in your budget, I didn't quite understand how it, for what you budgeted, you budgeted seventy-five thousand fifty, for instance, for tipping fees. But you used sixty-eight sixty-six for MSW and sixty-six thirty-three, which is the twenty-twenty-two price for the demo. At least that's the way it calculates out. So if we raise it to sixty-eight thirty-two, uh, it, it just doesn't compute for me. And then in the, on the per hall price, you have up in here that twenty-twenty-three is eight seventy-three eighty-two per hall, but yet in the budget calculation, it's eight fifty-nine oh five. So I'm, I'm a little worried about the money, but, you know.
So. That's why I hate fiscal years that don't end.
I know, but so the contract, the waste management contract is a calendar year contract that goes through December of twenty-twenty-three. And of course, our fiscal year is July to June.
So what's in our budget starting for July first was what, sixty?
Well, you budgeted a hundred and sixteen thousand.
Okay.
For instance, for the per hall.
Yep.
But according to what I calculate here, there's an average of forty-three MSW and sixty-two demo halls. And the calculation uses eight fifty-nine oh five per hall, but yet you're going to be paying eight seventy-three eighty-two per hall. So I didn't quite understand.
In twenty, in the calendar year twenty-three, right? Because we're gonna have two, we're gonna have two different prices. We're gonna have two different prices.
Is that why the, oh, is that why he averaged, oh, maybe he averaged out?
He knew it was gonna, so like, we're gonna have.
Figure out how much he thought it might go up, so he, I guess, I think that's.
Because for the rest of this year, we would have been at the eight fifty-nine or, and then next.
Eight forty-something, right?
So it's an average.
Oh, so it's an average of the two. All right.
But that was, I think we did the budget before they asked us for this increase.
They did. That's, that's part of the problem, too.
Plus, we were, we were hoping that it would only be, but he'd agreed to the one.
Right.
So maybe Andy was averaging it based on.
Well, maybe you should come up with some numbers that we could actually agree to. I don't know. What do you think? I was, we should just say no and stick to the not giving anything. We'll just stick to our contract and see what happens. I mean.
Like I was, I was, before the meeting, it kind of came up in a conversation. And on the other side of this, what I think about is, um, that especially on islands, we try to build relationships with companies. We've been with waste management for a long time. They've always worked with us. I don't want to lose that relationship, but I don't necessarily disagree with you that a contract is a contract.
Well, that's kind of why we asked him to split the difference. We didn't want to say no outright.
Right.
And we didn't want to really say yes to the three percent. We just thought we could maybe compromise, so.
Then, you know, if that's what you're thinking, then just stick to that. Say, well, we'll accept a one and a half percent, uh, increase for July, yeah, July first.
Already done our budget and this is all we can.
Right, that's part of it, too. It's like, you come to this earlier, we could have built this into the budget, found other places to. I mean, we probably should have asked anyway to meet them halfway, but this late in the budget process, it's difficult to make that kind of change, so.
Mm-hmm. I don't disagree. I'm just, you know, I'm trying to give you all, give you my thought process.
I mean, we might have to put it up to bid next year anyway, but I agree.
Well, yeah.
It's good to keep. I mean, we don't want to shut them down and say, no, we're just gonna stick to the contract.
Right.
But we didn't think we should give them everything they asked for either.
Right.
And we could go to.
I mean, this late, this late in the budget process, it's just, it's very difficult.
I mean, I'll, you know, I'll convey anything that you want me to. Uh, I'm just, you know. If you think that one and a half is the fair thing to do, then.
I mean, if we start at one and a half, maybe if he really stick, if he comes to two and says that's as low as he can go, I mean.
Right.
What do you think we?
If, if we get, if we get one and a half, great. If he comes down to two, you know, fine, but.
We're not doing for.
I think we, we just can't right now, like.
And plus in January, for the contract, we, he gets another.
Three and a half percent.
Three and a half percent, so.
So, yeah, so, I mean, I think we should stick at one and a half myself.
I agree. And, you know, understand everything that was put in the letter. I get it.
But also, we're under the same, we're under the same situation that they are.
Our, our costs are going up too, and you get this late in the budget process. We can't.
Yeah, we understand. We're in this, everyone's in the same situation. We'll, we'll meet you halfway. You can meet us halfway, basically.
Right.
We probably should say no, but like Marjorie said, we do not want to.
We don't want to anger, all right, antagonize.
Antagonize, right. We don't want to, we don't want to.
To put that in the motion. So change the, of course, change the percentage.
So I move to approve a one and a half percent increase beginning July first, two thousand twenty-two on MSW and demo bulk waste fees included in our solid waste collection and disposal agreement between the Town of Vinylhaven and Waste Management Disposal Services of Maine. Current contract is for five years ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. I'm not. Seconded, all those in favor?
Yes.
Nine, A, new business, approve and sign MSAD, a budget validation referendum warrant and notice of election.
Oh, this is the, this is the one where you have to sign all nine copies. These ones here.
We have six copies to sign again.
Nine. Nine.
I thought it was six. I was off. I knew it was a lot. I just couldn't remember it was nine. So, so we had, so we just said we don't have to make a motion. We just sign it.
Oh, that's a good question. Um.
It just says approve and sign, but.
I, I think you have to make a motion. I move that we approve and sign the budget validation referendum for MSADA.
I just have one question. Do we know what the increase in the school budget is?
There was a.
Can't remember what.
Yep, the thingy's over on, on the desk. It's in the school budget?
Well, we don't have a say in it until we vote on it.
Which is.
I don't know how it works. I'm new.
No, they've already had their budget thing like we have up there. So now it's gonna get voted on on the fourteenth, so we either vote up or down.
There's a district meeting.
Also, it hasn't totally been. So how are we, so we're just saying that they can have a vote?
Yeah.
This is their meeting warrant for the district meeting.
You vote on the June first of the budget. And then this is the validation that you approved the budget that was passed on June first.
So how can we vote on it today?
Yeah.
No, you're just approving the, this is only.
To have the actual vote on the first. This is just to approve.
All right, I say yes. Yes, we'll allow them to have a vote on June first.
Right.
But yes.
That's what we're doing, okay.
We're just allowing them to have a vote.
It has been.
Okay.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Yeah.
And copies.
Doesn't change much from the other year.
District, but just one school.
Used to have.
Yeah, I'm the same way when they set it up ahead.
I can't spell my name. A smart house. I need that. If you could make me a stamp.
I'm just gonna say you need a little signature stamp.
Yes, I was thinking that, Dallin.
Uh, we can't make it interesting.
You don't.
I'm just kidding.
Oh, God.
Bus driver at the school for this year? Why is the budget going up by fifty percent?
They're gonna get a.
Try to encourage one to apply, I guess.
A bus and a bus driver.
A bus?
Hmm, need a new bus.
You're kidding.
So I can sit there and rest now?
Sitting there.
The bus has been, the bus was, um, deemed unsafe by the.
Term I take again, whatever the.
Going to get an electric one.
Stuff that's either titanicated.
An electric bus.
This, can't make this. You can't make this up.
Where are they gonna charge it?
So, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna.
Not at my house. I'd be lucky bills too high as it is.
I'm just gonna zip it.
We'll just drive it up to the windmills and hook it right in.
There you go. They do in Rockland. They have a place over there. That's the only one I'm seeing.
It's two spots, isn't it?
Yeah.
There's all kinds of.
There's like five at the, five at the Shaw's and the Hannaford and Camden Rockford.
Always there?
There's a bunch on the Kennebuck.
Hold it pay for any of that.
You have to, in places, you have to put your credit card in.
No, they bought the two vans. Yeah, of the two vans.
I think so, somehow.
Car extract, so you put in the car and the car sends some money from, from you. Smart card.
Let me just keep them all in.
Just make it really pile.
So you gotta put the dates in all these? Oh, yeah, I see your name there. The one about Eric, does he not have to sign them?
We'll have to come over and sign. We'll have to drop him off on his porch.
Throw him out the window like on funny time with them.
I, I think I'll attend Thursday's meeting in person. I'll just be masked up. It'll be day nine. I mean, this is not conducive to normal operation.
You only had to do it for five days.
He's still testing positive.
Oh.
You'll be, it's not even about the positive test. You're only contagious for ten days anyway.
So does you, Dr. Eric?
I could be there right now. I just didn't feel like wearing a mask for, you know, while you guys ramble on. But, uh, on Thursday, I guess I'll have to be there. I want to hear what people have to say about this manager search as well.
Yeah, that's mine. It didn't seem like I signed nine. Seemed awful quick, but my scene, it doesn't take long. All right, so that's done.
All right. Nine B, approve and sign annual town election warrant.
Do they have?
Second, second, all those in favor?
Yes.
Did one with the new.
This is the.
Oh, no.
Election.
Oh, yeah, we didn't.
This is the elec- this is the election.
Annual town election warrant.
So the town can have an election on the fourteenth.
Right. I, are, we already approved it.
Sure. Is everybody all set?
Yeah, we all vote.
I seconded it.
We all voted. We all voted in affirmative. What would happen if we didn't allow the town to have an election? Would we get thrown in jail?
Interesting. I don't know.
Everything would go into default or we'd be a mess.
No, we just go to the fun balance. Yeah, well, so we should not have one of those stuff yet.
Yeah.
Uh, let's see, warrants, we couldn't pay bills.
Well, the fun balance.
I was just reading a thing, I was just reading a thing in, in down in Virginia, the legislature just disbanded the whole town and took it over. How many things are on the actual state ballot?
Oh, it's just really simple. Just primaries and nobody's contested and it's crazy.
It's just Janet Mills and Paul Page, right? There's no one even fighting with them.
Yeah, so there's a Democrat ballot and a Republican ballot.
Shelley Pinger's not getting challenged.
Nobody. There's one person that was getting challenged, but it was like probate officer or something like that.
Oh, in Knox County.
But I, yeah, I don't, I don't think.
I'm not really, it doesn't really matter.
It's really a boring ballot.
Yep, I'm just, I was making. No, anybody wanted to be probate.
All right, nine C, certificate of settlement.
This is two, um, because Andy's not the tax collector. Now I'm the tax collector, so this is transferring the balance due to me. I didn't want to do it, but Darlene made me.
So does everything look right in your eyes? You wouldn't give it to us if it didn't, right?
Yeah.
So I make a motion that we sign this settlement, certificate of settlement.
And the recommitment.
And recommitment.
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Which copy do we sign on that?
The one Pam's got it. There's one, one that says settlement and there's one that says recommitment.
Two.
I know.
Moving right along.
Don't say anything because we haven't.
Thanks, Darlene.
The Republican ballot, ballot is nothing to vote on.
They're all, they're Democratic ones still.
He's signing it. Doesn't feel well, so.
Right.
Okay, um. I think we're done with the new business, correct?
I think so.
Alright, ten, the port, town manager.
Um, so I received a resignation from Wes Robinson. But he did say that he would work through the, this year's commitment, which is usually in August, I think. And then he would um, do the um. Municipal valuation return.
Yep.
Um, so I guess. I don't know, should we start advertising now?
Yes, please.
Yes.
Where do we put that, like MMA and?
Um, I don't know where Vinyl Haven, but is it usually the main municipal website?
I mean, I'm assuming that's where probably Andy would put it first. I mean, maybe put it in the.
Locally?
Yeah.
Like, do they, do they send it to the courier? Does that?
It's so expensive.
I know.
Okay.
Put it on the town website or something.
Okay.
Is that what we do, MMA?
It is free.
Yeah.
With a membership, it's free advertising.
Yeah, I think.
Yes, it is, yeah.
So I do the WEN and MMA.
And it'd be up on the town website.
On the town website.
Yeah, I think those three things should be good for now.
What's the three?
Yep.
Oh, right, I'm sorry, yep.
Is it a position that people are certified to?
Yes, you have to have a state, you know, certified. Assessor, certified assessor in the state of Maine, cause we have a single certified assessor form of government here. And in some towns, they have a board of assessors, which is usually the board of selectmen, but it's not this town, just uh. When they big. I don't know, back in the day, when, when they adopted the town manager form of government, they adopted that uh, single appointed assessor.
Good question. Where do you? Where do you appeal decision by?
You, um. There's a board of uh, assessor review now. Uh, it used to be the county commissioners, but. Uh, it, it wasn't really working well. So now there's a, a, a professional board of assessment review. So you go there and then if you're not happy, I think it's Superior Court, but don't quote me on that. I think that's correct though.
Goes to the Superior Court.
But you have to start with requesting. An abatement from our assessor.
From the town.
Do you know any idea what the timeframe is once you receive the letter?
Once he receives a letter?
Property owner receives the letter. From Wes.
No, you, you, you give Wes the abatement letter, then he has sixty or ninety days.
I think it's sixty days.
But then once he responds, how much time do you have to?
Oh, uh, it should be in the letter, I believe. He's supposed to say, I refuse your request. You can go to the board of assessment review and you have X amount of days to do that. But it's, I, again, I think it's thirty or sixty. I'd have to look it up.
Yeah, it couldn't be any less than thirty. I would, I think that'd be like a minimum. Yeah, I don't know.
Um, so I'm gonna add. That article to the town meeting warrant and we're gonna sign it this Thursday.
Yeah, that's, that's, yep.
That's a special town meeting, so how about annual?
No, the annual town meet, oh wait, wait a minute. I'm confused. We've got two things that we're.
Cause we're adding.
The special town meeting is for the boundary agreement.
Right.
But the downtown project is going on the annual town meeting.
Oh, right.
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 So we're gonna prepare that.
We can just do both at the same meeting?
Can you just sign the last page and we'll add it?
I mean, if we're gonna be, we're signing that. The other one Thursday, we can sign this updated one Thursday too, right?
Just have to reprint the last page of it, right, basically?
That still gives you thirty days.
They didn't go for it then.
You can just say, sign my name.
No, no, no.
We had stamps, we wouldn't have to worry about.
No stamps.
No stamps.
No stamps.
Wait a minute, what am I doing? Alright, so are we, okay, um. We already talked about the downtown project.
Yes.
The broad, I haven't done anything with the broadband. I was supposed to. Get in touch with somebody from Consolidated, I guess, and I, I haven't done anything on that. Um, and you're already aware that Don Garrish is coming on Thursday.
Yes.
And Brent Bridges will be here that day too. And I just wanted you to know that uh, Wednesday, June first, I'll be out for the day. I have to go down to Portland.
I thought we were meeting with Don at five.
Yeah, so he's gonna be here at two fifteen.
Oh, the meeting is at five.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
The public part.
But I thought he was meeting with various people in the afternoon.
Not with us.
Right.
We're meeting, we're, we'll be there at the.
At five.
Public meeting.
Yeah, right. He wants to talk to.
He wanted to talk to like knowing any different people.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Is it selectmen first and then public? That's what we've advertised in five-thirty, a public.
Okay, so we have.
You'll come in at five.
So fine, we'll come in at five, do our. Sign what we need to sign, then we'll have the public meeting with Don. Does that work at five-thirty?
That's, that's fine, that's perfect. That gives us a half an hour to do the, it shouldn't take us a half an hour to do that, but that'll be fine.
I know that there's a water district meeting next week, right?
Well, we do the um, the downtown project on the first Thursday of every.
We're gonna possibly.
Yeah, we probably don't have to, we probably don't have much to discuss anyway, do we, Gabe?
Is there some way?
I'm sorry? I'm sorry? Oh, so Nate, we're gonna meet thir- nevermind. Thank you.
I would like some sort of update on uh, what's happening between the water district and the town. With the undivided interest in the land. Is there some way I can get an update on that?
Um, Gabe can, can give you all the notes. I believe.
Yep, except for your executive.
Right, we have an executive session about it, so.
I'll email you what I have, Marjorie, what they looked at.
I mean, we can't discuss that.
No, right now, no.
So.
But.
Okay.
Marjorie can see the notes.
Yeah, yeah.
Session.
Got it, okay, yeah. And Gabe has all of any other.
Andy would have taken notes.
Right.
I don't know.
I think he was supposed to, yeah.
Yeah.
So you can look at those notes and. Gabe, Gabe.
I don't have those notes, but I have.
He must have some.
Would you like to go there?
No.
When we have an executive session. He's in here taking notes and he takes the time down in and out.
I'm just teasing, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we do have those, right? Cause we should.
I don't know.
You should. I don't get, be there. Yeah, I don't get his notes.
It should be somewhere on a yellow legal bag, that's what you write tomorrow.
Okay, look for yellow.
Probably only three hundred in there.
Right.
Just.
I'm just kidding, I'm sorry.
Alright, anything else?
No, thank you.
Report of members.
I just like, I like that. I like how you have the uh. The uh, possible um.
Motion.
Motion, yes, so we. I appreciate that. Andy would just make us fumble around, trying to come up with.
I know, that is, that is a lot quicker.
That is.
Clean things up and neat enough. I appreciate that, Marjorie.
Yeah.
Yes.
You're welcome. Um, I just wanna make sure that the town parking lot is cleaned up by Monday next.
Are the street sweepers coming this weekend?
They've already been here.
Oh, they're already, when I was gone, they had any notice.
He was here Friday night, Friday and Saturday.
Before what?
Before Memorial Day.
Before Memorial Day.
Icy funky.
Um, I have something. Um, Fisherman's Day, the first Sunday of June, June fifth. I think we actually have to approve use of the fish plant parking lot because it's town property.
Yeah.
Have they officially requested it?
Yeah, they were, they requested it really at, at our last meeting, but.
It was just a note written from Abby. It was not like a formal, no.
Well, they wanna use the property. I don't know if we should cover our bases and approve the use for this or not. But we probably should.
So it's gonna be wheat from this Sunday. Is it? Too much for them to just. The request, so we can approve it on Thursday?
I don't, I don't really, why, I don't, I think that seems unnecessary. I mean, they.
Approve that. Who's the group? You make the motion, you make the motion there.
Um, I move that we approve um, whichever high school class it is, the use of the. Fish plant war for uh, Lockserman's Day on June fifth.
Back in, and it's the skipper's program.
Yes, skipper's program, yeah.
I think this.
We've got all those in favor.
I'm joking.
Okay.
Who's second? Sorry.
Um.
I second, Eric made that.
Anyone else? I think I'll, I'll do, just a question on this before I sign it. We changed the amount due on this lease for the um. Bar hell, thank you. We only changed it to five hundred, is that correct?
And then also.
The internet.
The internet. Cause it was four hundred, right, before and we said.
Yes, four fifty before.
And then we said, they'll pay the internet too, which is roughly. Another.
Forty, fifty bucks, I don't know what.
Depends on what they, yeah, yeah.
And it's, yeah, you get that special deal for a couple of months and then move.
So yeah, I thought that's what we compromised, cause someone wanted to go to five fifty or something.
Thought it was five.
Okay.
I, that's what I thought. I, that's what I remember, but I, I mean, that was like a month ago. Seems like a month ago.
You have to, um, the bill. You'll have to bill her. Andy said something about he was gonna get it set up. Does anybody know if that's been done?
I know he was working on it.
He was, okay.
Okay, well, I'm gonna sign this.
Which it, her being talked on that.
Yeah.
You want it? You may put it in the folder.
Anyone else? All those in favor?
Okay.
Yes.
Here, we get out of here.
Yeah.
Stay home next time, Eric.
Thanks, Ben.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you, guys.
And I was gonna ask before we adjourn, but anyway, it doesn't matter. I'm really disgusted with the mowing job around. The bank, the memorial there is atrocious. The, the monument hasn't been mowed.